Please rise to salute our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Ross Zickelwich?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Seven present.
Under special order of business, we have presentation by CLT Technology Review. I'll hand it over to Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor Murphy. This evening, we have the pleasure of welcoming the Center for Educational Leadership in Technology, acronym is CELT, who have conducted a very detailed study of the state of technology in the Lowell Public Schools. They have been in every corner of our school system, met with a variety of focus groups, talked to leadership teachers, all people in the organization. And they have some, have found some very interesting findings and have a number of next steps for our district. And so I would like to introduce our presenters from the organization who have been working with us in a very responsible and detailed fashion. I'd like to introduce Ms. Laurie Keating, who has been working on our plan, and also Ms. Cindy Dunlap. And I will pass it over to them for them to make the study come alive.
Hi, I'm Laurie Keating. I'm at CELT. I was a technology director in Lowell, which is a small town in Blackstone Valley, for six or eight years, and I've been consulting with CELT since then for about the past six. And I have a lot of experience in school districts and also in MasQ, which is the state organization. I'm a past president of MasQ and have done, I'm sorry? Have done a lot of work with instructional technology. And my friend Cindy Dunlap is from Nashua and has similar experience. She's a former special ed teacher, former technology director, and she's past president of NISTI, which is the New Hampshire NISTI affiliate. That's the technology and education group. So we both have spent a lot of time working with school districts around the country and around our states. So in June, I came to Lowell to talk to Jay with the president of our company, John Filippo. And we met with the technology subcommittee at the time and talked about doing an evaluation here, an assessment of what was going on and coming up with recommendations for how you can improve, knowing that, you know, you wanted to go forward. That'd be good. I don't think I can do both. Technology challenged. Okay. So we're going to talk a little bit today about our background, about the methodology for our study, and then go through the findings and recommendations and talk about the next steps towards achieving them. So CELT has been around for about 20 years, and our mission is to help learning organizations improve their processes and to look at their programs for education and technology and help to do things that are going to help student achievement. So we, we work a lot with leadership. We have partnerships with organizations all over the country. One of our big partnerships right now is with the Gates Foundation, but also with state departments of education and national groups. We have people from all over the country working with us and try to be a thought leader. We try to keep up on all of the current literature and figure out what impact that's going to have on technology and, you know, with the whole goal of improving student achievement. So in our, in our study, as Jane said, we came up in September as a group and met with a number of people all around the school district. We had a series of interviews of all the leadership. We had focus groups that included people from the tech department, teachers, principals, people from the central office in different topic areas. And we also visited about 10 schools, you know, the high school, a couple of middle schools, and several elementary schools. So we feel like we got a good cross-section all around the school district. We, then, I'm going to go forward. As we were working, we worked in four different areas. We have teams and we call it Team A, B, C, D. The first one has to do with curriculum, instructional technology, and the devices that are in the school district. The second one has to do with people, IT staff, staff development, community connections, things like that. The third team has to do with the network infrastructure, the policies that you're using, standards that you're setting, things like that. And the fourth team has to do with data. That's our Team D. So we're looking at administrative systems, data being used for decision support, monitoring and evaluation, project management, things like that. So we started with this project organizational structure that starts with the people of Lowell. School committee, Superintendent Franco. We have an executive steering committee that we met with a few times during the course of this so that we could bring back what we had learned to date and where we were going next with it. And then we have our review teams. So on this sheet, we look at the people who are on our review teams. And as you can see, it's a cross-section of people from different backgrounds who could review our findings in different areas and tell us whether we were on track and where we needed to go next. So we use an interactive methodology where we start with the data collection. We take all of the information from all of these focus groups. We write up copious notes and share them. We had four people working on this project directly. Look at some documents. We look at research and best practices in other school districts and, you know, compare. Then we take all of that and meet as a group to kind of sort through it. What did you see? What did, you know, this person see? So that we can compare from our different perspectives and backgrounds. And we analyze it and put it into a series of findings. So we try to have multiple data points to make a finding so that we're not just picking up what we heard at one school and assuming that that's a trend for the school district. We want to hear it a couple of different times from different people. Once we have our findings, then if something seems to be, you know, important enough or if it seems that there are multiple points that speak to it, then we make a recommendation based on best practices, based on benchmarking, things like that. So in this process, we do the needs analysis, which includes the site visits. Then we go through and look at where is Lowell going? You know, what makes sense for Lowell? So that's why we were meeting with the steering committee a couple of times, because there are different directions that you can go in to resolve some of the issues that you come up with. Then we make our recommendations, write the blueprint, implementation plans. And then, you know, we're available to help with the implementation. And it's called a continuous improvement model because at each step of the way, you have to keep going back and checking. Am I on track? Is this still the direction that I'm going in? Does this make sense for me? Is this project working for me? So we want to keep going, not just go out and, you know, throw something out in the air and see if it sticks, but you want to make sure that it fits for Lowell. So our technology blueprint, which we're in the process of finalizing, is organized into 15 chapters. And when you look at the table of contents, you can really see how those align to the teams that we were working on. So what you have, the curriculum assessment, teaching and learning technologies, the learning environments in school facilities, those are directly related to that Team A I was talking about, the curriculum and the resources that the kids are using. Then we go into the IT organizational development and staffing and staff development. There's another chapter on the next page that's community participation, and those are the people chapters. Then we go into the network ones. There's a policies chapter, the standards chapter, network and communications, and that's our Team C. That one also does the budget and funding chapter, so that we're looking at total cost of ownership. And I'll say now, I'll probably say it again, but when we talk about total cost of ownership, we're talking about a lot more than just purchasing a computer or a device because there's training, there's maintenance, support, a lot of different things that are associated with it besides just the sticker price. The last set has to do with the data, again, the administrative systems, decision support, school and program planning, and then monitoring and evaluation. So those are where you're using the data to go forward. So that's how it all flows through. We first came up here in June and started the planning very soon after that. We met in August a couple of times to talk about who was going to be on the teams, who would lead the teams, when would we come up, and to figure out which schools would we be able to visit. I have to give credit to Mary Bader. I don't see her here, but she was just such an incredible help with everything, every step of the way. And she was wonderful. So she helped to organize all of our school visits, make sure that everybody was available for the interviews. And, you know, we just kept right on track with her help. So we did all of our data collection in September, and then we met as a group and kept talking. We wanted to get this project done relatively quickly so that you can have it to inform your budget decisions that are coming up. So we did the key findings and reviewed those in October. Then we wrote the blueprint and reviewed that in December, and now we're revising that. And we've been meeting with the executive team along the way. So we, we wanted to go through some commendations, some findings, and then the recommendations in that order. So for commendations, we thought that the relationship that you have with the city is excellent. And, you know, we go in school districts all over the country, as we said. And sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not good. But, you know, there's a lot of strength here. And I think that sharing some of the systems that you share and, you know, working together with the IT department, you know, really gives you a good foundation to go forward because there's a sense of trust and collaboration that's important. We know that Jane had come in as superintendent right before we started, and every place we went, we heard about her communication and the meetings she's having with the principals and the leadership that she's developing on her team. You know, that's really outstanding, and that is going to help also in going forward because you'll be able to have, if the principals are on board, then everything's going to fall into place. And the fact that she's working with them on a regular basis and they appreciate it and like coming to those meetings, that's going to be a really good thing. We've also been hearing about significant improvements in AYP in a lot of the schools. We know that the principals are using data a lot, and they, they really like using data, and they're trying to encourage the teachers to do that. So, you know, that's really important. For the findings, we're going to talk, again, we go in four areas. So we'll talk about our findings in four areas. And first thing related to curriculum and the instructional use of technology, you know, the vintage and capacity of most of your computers is old, outdated. And so it slows everything down. It slows the network down because you don't have the processor, you know, the bandwidth. But I think people know that, so that's an area that's, you know, a huge area of need. Also, because of that, or along with that, the integration of technology tools and resources is not addressed very well. You know, the, the teachers don't, they don't depend on the technology, so they don't make an effort to use it. So I think that, you know, there were, there was a lot of positive attitude where they would do it if they could, but they don't feel that they have anything to work with. Staffing and support. We know that because of some economic challenges, you've had to lay off some personnel, the instructional technology specialists and some of the library media specialists. We know that, you know, there isn't enough funding for everything and that you had to make the choice to fund some teaching positions and paraprofessionals instead. So as a result, the IT department has gone from having an IT director with an instructional technology vision to having a network manager whose focus is on keeping the systems in place, running, and keeping the network running, but can't do everything. So basically, you have seven people in the MIS department managing 2,150 users and 8,000 computers. And a typical average in business would be one staff member for about every 350 computers. So they're all doing maybe 1,200 each and trying to hold it together. At the same time, as I said, you've only kept the high school library media specialist. No other school has one. And so that means that nobody's there teaching information literacy skills to the kids or having library class or co-teaching or anything like that. And as the dependence on technology increases, your staffing is decreased. So that's kind of going in the opposite direction. So it's an area of need. Anyway, processes. You have very good administrative systems. They're all, you know, if they're not top best of breed, they're all very good quality systems and solid. They should provide all of the information that you need. And yet, we found that a lot of processes are being done manually. When you put in a system, it's important to look at how that system works and adjust your processes to fit the system, not try to make the system fit your processes. So we think that there's a lot of process, what we call a reengineering, but simplifying processes, you know, less manual paperwork and more using the system as it was designed to be used because it will do what you need if you use it that way. Also, there are concerns about the accuracy of data. We know that it's been difficult getting state reporting done. Part of it has to do with students moving around from school to school and, you know, difficulties with that. But there, some data governance would help that out. And the last one is the network infrastructure. All of the schools have a school-developed webpage that you can access from the district webpage, but all it provides is demographic information. There's an opportunity to add to that, but that's done through the city webmaster. So it's not a process that's easy, user-friendly, or very accessible for the schools and teachers to do. The infrastructure standards also are, you know, you have really good infrastructure standards, but they mirror the city standards, and so they're not designed for a school district. So we think that you need to take a look at that and come up with some that are, you know, more open to teaching and learning and the processes that go on in, in school districts. Just a slide. Technology is not the be-all and end-all, certainly. Technology's not going to make the difference. It's the processes and the systematic implementation that will make the difference. And we think that, you know, the ultimate goal would be 21st century literacy for your students and increasing student achievement through that goal. It's got to be all about the kids, not just about bringing in the devices. So how do we get there? Well, we, we came up with a set of recommendations in the report. I think that there are 94 in all, and we don't expect that you're going to do all of them, but we want to summarize some of the main ones here that we think are important. You need to refresh the technology that's in your classroom. One way would be to go out and replace everything. I think that a more cost-effective, long-lasting way would be to refresh some of it, but also implement a bring-your-own-device program. You have teachers who would love to bring in their own laptops. You have kids who would love to bring in their own laptops. And if you set up a portal that would enable people to do that and log into the portal to get access to their district resources, then you'd really only have to provide devices for the kids that don't have them. A portal would make it platform-independent. Doesn't matter if they're on a Mac or a tablet or an iPhone or an Android or whatever. So that's one of the things that we are talking about that we want to move forward with. The other thing is that you need to look at student technology skills and information literacy skills. And the technology skills are how to use Word, how to use spreadsheets, how to do different things. And that needs to be taught in the context of what they're doing. It's not something extra. If kids are studying weather, certainly, and they're going to make a chart of temperature, then teacher teaches, teaches them how to track temperature in a spreadsheet. So they're learning how to use the spreadsheet in the context of studying weather. The information literacy skills have to do with good research strategies and validating websites and citing your sources and respecting copyright and things like that. So those are two different sets of skills. Both of them can be taught in the context of what they're doing. Support and staffing. We think that it would be a good idea to reorganize the MIS department into a real IT department with a Director of Information Technology. We would bring the instructional technology people into it. And that director would have to be involved at the leadership level with all of the efforts that are going on in the school district. So the technology is not an afterthought. It's always part of it so that when the curriculum department wants to bring something in, that technology person can be thinking ahead and getting things, you know, so that they're all going to fall into place when the time comes. That person also would be responsible for state reporting, for writing grants, for planning, you know, doing a lot of different things in the school district. Also, you need to look at technology proficiencies for all of the staff, not just teachers, although the teachers, you know, certainly are where you're going to start, but, you know, the, the administrative staff that you have at the central office, the clerical people. They all need, they all need staff development and help so that they can use technology easily. So this would be kind of a functional view of an information, communication, and technology services department where you have the ICTS department here and you have the leadership governing it and also the customers. And I think that's the main point, is that it's a service department. It's not, you know, the infrastructure isn't the goal. It's the means to an end. So as we look at it more specifically, we would have the superintendent. And under, under Jay, we have the Director of ICTS. We'd also have a project management office, which ideally would be a person, either half-time, full-time, whatever. But it needs, that person would be tracking all of the projects that are going on, not just the technology projects, but you have renovations going on and building projects and things in your facilities and everything that needs to be happening. We'd bring in a person to be the help desk coordinator. There's been a new help desk ticket system that's been started up, and that's a really good thing to be using. So when people submit a ticket, somebody needs to be routing them, tracking them, closing them. They shouldn't be all falling into one person's email box. You know, that's, that's kind of an overload. So then we would have the network management strand. We'd have the data strand in this group, instructional technology facilitators, and the library media people also because they are very connected to technology resources. So for administrative systems, this would be all your systems, all kinds of systems. So we would recommend for the website that you bring in a web hosting system. If you have a web hosting system, then you don't have to manage the servers. You don't have to have anyone write in the HTML. You just, it's hosted by a company. And it's a plug-and-play type of thing where, you know, teachers can have their websites and it's as easy as uploading a file or just, you know, typing something into a box. But that would facilitate dynamic parent communication. They'd put up instructional resources. They would post assignments, worksheets. Nobody loses their worksheet because they could always go up there and get it. They could communicate directly with students through that, directly to parents. And, you know, it would, it would really help to expand the school day. So when you're assigning homework, you might have a discussion, and that might happen even on the website. We think, as I mentioned processes before, you need to simplify some of your processes and stop doing them manually so that you can take advantage of the systems that you have in place. Data governance process, so that people are responsible for the data. Right now, it seems that MIS is responsible for most of the data, but it's not their data. So they're not responsible for what goes into the systems. They're just trying to keep them running. Again, they're a service department. So the schools need to be responsible for the school data. And, you know, the HR would be responsible for the HR data and different things like that. So there are data governance processes that go in and assign a person as a data steward and set up criteria. You use what's called a data dictionary so that you know what each field is supposed to look like. And it simplifies things once you have it set. And the last one is a project management office so that you're defining all of your projects, all of your large projects, and you have them approved by a committee. And so no one's just off doing something. And you set milestones and targets and benchmarks and, you know, a timeline with deliverables so that everybody knows on the project what's supposed to happen when, and they're accountable for that. So this, if we were to go with a bring-your-own-device project here, and when I was talking about a portal, this screen shows what the, how the portal would work. You have all of your little people there working on their mobile devices and able to get into the portal to sign in. They all come in through that central service that provides security and role-based access so teachers see what they're supposed to see, students see what they're allowed to see, parents get their view, and then out onto the internet. And you can actually set this up in any way. I mean, it could be that since you have some instructional resources, some programs, say you're using Rosetta Stone, just as an example, and that's a program for learning languages. Well, maybe you have some people in the school district, adults, who don't speak English well and want to learn a language. So maybe they can sign up for that in the off-hours. Or, you know, maybe someone, you're going on a trip and you just want to brush up on your Spanish because it's been a long time. So maybe you allow community members to log in and, you know, use that when they have time to do that. So just different options, role-based. Maybe you charge, maybe you don't. You know, that's all a peripheral question, but this is basically how that works. And again, community learning network. It's not just in the schools. It's all over the community. You have the libraries involved, the universities, and, you know, all different groups are involved in the learning network. You have a lot of good partnerships already. The collaboration between the city and the schools, again, it's a good best practice. It's important to make sure that the plans that you have for technology are relying to each group's strategic plan so that it's not just, you know, what the person that wrote it is thinking. It's got to be the schools are doing the schools' thing, the city's doing the city's thing. And establish a standards committee so that you're looking at return on And establish a standards committee so that you're looking at return on investment and total cost of ownership. And so when you're bringing in a product, you need to make sure that it's going to fit, that it's going to work, and that there's a good purpose for it. The wireless network can be configured to enable students, teachers and parents to bring their own technology. As we were just looking at that portal, this is what we're talking about. We'd like to pilot that and get that started within three to six months so we can see how it's working and find out what the little gotchas might be. And so then by the time school starts in the fall, there can be a larger, larger scaled And we just also wanted to say that the success of the plan is important on the operating budget. You know, obviously, it's going to cost some money. We think in the previous one, when we said pilot, we think it's very important to do a pilot before you run into a full-scale implementation of anything. You have a lot of schools here, a lot of students and a lot of teachers, and so it would be important to start something on a small scale. First, you do like a demonstration project, somebody tries it to see, is this really what we thought it was? Then you try it with a group of users, maybe a class, maybe a couple of classes, and find out, how easy is this going to be to implement and how scalable will it be? And you have to, you know, you set targets and you're monitoring it, make sure it goes through, find out where the infrastructure issues may be, how is this going to work with curriculum, what kind of staff development's going to be needed and things like that. Then you can go forward on a larger, do a few schools at a time or do, you know, grade levels at a time. But in a district this size, you never just want to go and implement something all across the board, you want to phase things in. So for next steps, we hinted at this before, and the information communication technology services department is again a service organization and they're supporting instruction, communications, the business services, facilities, all different groups within the district. So they're the service that drives, that provides the power for everything, but they're not the ultimate goal. So, you know, the action plans are spread all, all across these areas, and these aren't necessarily your department names, but these are the functions that you have. So we just think it's really important to remember that, you know, it's a joint effort, everybody's going to pitch in in the next. This one is, has to do with phasing things in. So you can't start everything and look at the whole list of everything that needs to be done and start it for September and, you know, think it's all going to be done in three years. You have to go through and prioritize and choose what you want to do, what's important. And so if you look at this graphic, this would have just a small amount being done in that first year. You know, a little bit more in this area, a little bit less in this area, just, just because that's the way it is. Then the second year, you're going to bite off a little bit more, and then the third year, you're going to do a little bit more, but it's very gradually phased in. So critical success factors, funding, leadership, planning, partnerships, you have a lot of these things going on in the school district. I think that you're at a really good point to do this. One of the things that we did, can we go to the previous slide? One of the things that we did was to take our report and we made a matrix of every recommendation that was in it. There are, I think, 94 in it, and you'll get the whole thing very soon. But we sat down as a team to look at how, how would we phase these in? So first, we started by ranking them high, medium and low priority. And some of them are probably, you know, way at the bottom, a lot of them though are right at the top of what needs to be done. Then we looked at, when do we want to start them? Does it need to happen this spring? Does it want to happen next year? You know, when do we need to phase these things in? So that's a starting point that we're at right now. We'll continue working on that. Some of these are what we call low-hanging fruit that can be easily addressed in a short time but make a noticeable difference. So, okay, let's go to the next. Anyway, okay. So again, with the funding and the leadership, and I think that phasing things in, I think that you'll be able to do it. This is just a graphic of decision support and the way this looks, I mean, excuse me, the way this works, it's using data for everything. It's just that continuous cycle of assessing and reporting and checking on the data to make sure that you're going where you want to be going. So just a quote from Albert Einstein, "Computers are incredibly fast, accurate, stupid. Humans are slow, inaccurate and brilliant, and together they're powerful beyond imagination." So I think that's what we want to leave you with tonight. Thanks.
No, I was just going to say if we had questions for the presenters, we certainly could have a discussion with them. To give you a sense of where we are, looking at all this information, is the, the different working groups, there's a full report that we're giving, one or two last read-throughs, that's multiple chapters, 12 or 14 chapters long, that's about 300 pages. That then breaks down into the prioritization matrix that goes through the, say, the 94 individual recommendations, and the SALT group has made recommendations, our teams are looking at them now. It, with really with regard to phasing, what we think is really necessary immediately, what we think could happen over the next one to five years, because this is going to be a three to five-year plan, as it's going to tie into our whole district technology plan. Then what I would like to do is probably set up a technology subcommittee, maybe a joint subcommittee, to really go through the entire plan, go through the prioritization matrix and have the school committee weigh in on priorities and what the different recommendations of both the SALT group as well as our staff are with this whole process. Because from that point, once we actually identify on the phasing, say what's going to happen year one, two, three, four, five, we'll be able to really tie out a project budget for what we need to allocate for the different projects in the different years. It's very difficult at this point, looking at the 94 recommendations, to, you know, you could tie a total dollar amount to it, but it really wouldn't be beneficial if we didn't know what we wanted to at least tackle in this current year and then probably in next year as far as budget phasing. But I think we need to have a series of conversations about what our priorities for the administration and the school committee, to then be able to tie the project budget out to it and work with SALT to do that. So you have a 300-page document down to the, the working document with all the recommendations. There'll be an executive summary that'll probably go home to you Friday in the, in the packet or in your FYI. That's probably 15 to 20 pages long, that just summarizes the entire project, but gives you a little more in-depth information into the recommendations than tonight's presentation, and then this fed down into the presentation. So I would say next steps probably to ask questions and have a conversation, but then to accept this as a report of progress to, to show some of the work that's been done in the district to date and schedule in the, in the next number, no, next couple of weeks, some subcommittee meetings to really get deep into the plan, the recommendations, and to get community and administration and school committee feedback on the prioritization of this, so that we can then work with SALT to tie some project budgets together.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation and certainly for the work that you've done in our district. Just a few quick things, just to make sure I'm clear on this, Mr. Lang. So we'd be looking at this next technology subcommittee probably in the next couple of weeks, and at that point, we'd have the 94 recommendations, having already gone through one pass with the administration and the, our own internal staff working groups, so that that's what would be presented to us, kind of already at the beginnings at least of a priority listing.
Yeah, correct. What happened is each of the individual working groups reported their information back to the SALT team. The SALT team then compiled the recommendations in the report, and now the administration is taking a look at that to go through those recommendations and the phasing and giving some feedback to SALT. So I would say within the next two weeks, that'll be finalized, and we'll be ready to kind of joint recommendations about this between SALT and the administration to go to subcommittee. So I'd say by the end of, end of January, early, maybe the first week in February, we could start having those meetings, because we really then need to get the school committee to weigh in on your help in prioritizing the plan, so that we can then take the next step and actually tie the budget together. And my hope really would be, say, the next two to three weeks, to have those subcommittee meetings, work on the prioritization, take the rest of February to really tie out project budgets to this, so that it comes into line and we can probably formally adopt a plan by early March, so that I can then include that in my budget preparation for the springtime.
Great, I think that, that timing sounds, sounds perfect. Just one thing, and we, you know, certainly as we move forward, we'll be asking a lot more questions in the subcommittee and whatnot. I am curious, the, the bring your own device situation, I'm going to bet that everyone's, has concerns around that. Have you ever done that in a, in a, or seen that done successfully in a district? Certainly, we have, more than 75% of our students are on free and reduced lunch. Doesn't make us entirely unique, but I'm just curious if you've seen anything even similar like, you know, in a district similar to ours, seen that implemented and, and successful in any way?
We have seen it implemented successfully. It's relatively new because the portals are relatively new. In Georgia, there's a district that has, I think, 40,000 or 50,000 kids that's using it extremely successfully, and it's not a wealthy district necessarily. You know, some of the kids have them, some of them don't. Certainly, I think that it reduces the, the amount that the district has to provide and helps you target, but I think it's always surprising to find out how many kids do have a device and, you know, they, they do have access to them. This also allows people to access from home. So if you log into your computer at your desk at work or at school, then you get a certain desktop that has access to the server, it has access to the resources that you're using there, the server-based things and all of that. With a portal, you can get access to that any place that you have access to the internet, so even on your phone, your, you know, those Droid tablets, your Kindle Fire or anything. And, you know, going forward, if the district were to start using Google Docs, for example, where a lot of their writing might be in the cloud, so that the kids are doing a paper or a report and that's all up in the cloud, then the kids can access it anywhere. And it's nice to have everything in one place so that you're not emailing files to yourself or running around with a flash drive or, you know, different ways that we all have to, to bring things, because I know for me, I always have the wrong version or, you know, I forget that when I used to have a computer at work, you know, that was, I'd leave a file there and then have time that I didn't know I was going to have to work on something at home or... We might point out also that one of the reasons we didn't even consider this as a district in this place is because of the huge effort that we have made building your district. None of this would be possible if you didn't have a cloud structure in place to support this kind of remote access. So it's taking advantage of an investment that the district has already made in a very strong and robust infrastructure that you've used your E-rate funds for over the past probably five years and building that up and bringing your wireless networks to your schools and your classrooms. That's been a huge effort that because of the age of your current resources is not being maximized anywhere near its potential.
I'd only say that as we, you know, as we move forward certainly, and I'm sure you're aware, it would be really, of all the, the information gathering that's going on through this process, which I think will be really helpful, we'd really need to drill down and find out exactly what our student population is capable of in terms of, you know, whether it's a smartphone or an iPad, whatever it is. Because I don't have any sense of that. I have my suspicions, but I think that we'd really need to ensure that we had a critical mass of students and that we would be able to make the investments to make sure that every student had access. Those that couldn't afford it, we'd have to be the ones purchasing it. So that's just one of the, one of the things that I jumped out. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to accept as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikwich? All in favor? Signified by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. And, and thank you, Ms. Keating and Ms. Dunlap for the presentation. Moving on to minutes section for acceptance, we have minutes of the school committee inauguration of Tuesday, January 3, 2012, as well as the regularly scheduled minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, January 4, also 2012. Any questions on the minutes? Move for approval by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikwich. All in favor? Signified by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next, we have permission to enter. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Schoolworks LLC in the amount of $15,500 to provide services that will include establishing a document portfolio, a two-day site visit and follow-up report, as well as planning support required by the Merklin redesign grant. Funding will be provided by the Merklin School redesign grant. To ASAP Fire and Safety Corporation Incorporated for $6,937 to amend the existing contract to provide additional service, maintenance and replacement to over 500 fire extinguishers and hose cabinet services in 30 locations. Funding provided by the school department budget, maintenance and replacement of equipment. To Evergreen Center Incorporated for $72,821 to amend the existing contract to provide the additional out-of-district tuition costs for one plus one additional student enrolled and receiving services as outlined in their special education IEP. Funding provided by the school department's special education tuition account.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Any questions? Roll call, please. Oh, excuse me. Move for approval by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Moving on to memorials, we have Helen Melanakis, mother of Lowell High School teacher, John Melanakis. Joseph D. McLaughlin Jr., father of Lowell High School nurse, Mary McLaughlin. Brent J. Nelson, brother of retired Lowell High School Athletic Director, Walter Nelson. Catherine R. Meehan Murphy, retired Butler School paraprofessional. Esther T. Awon Herman, wife of late Dr. Ernest Herman, who served on the Lowell School Committee and was a special education director and retired daily middle school teacher. Evangeline Leganus, retired substitute teacher and mother-in-law of Karen Leganus, teacher, academy clerk. And, and last week, we have Armin P. Mercia, former mayor and longtime city councillor. Could we all please rise in a moment of silence and dock in chambers? May the rest in peace. We have, moving on to unfinished business, we have the establishment of Lowell School Committee Subcommittee's for 2012, 2013. And I think if there's no discussion, debate, diatribes. Move for approval by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. We'll take a roll call on that.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And then next on the unfinished business, we have the Lowell School Committee Subcommittee assignments for 2012, 2013. Move for approval by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. Roll call as well, please.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And next, we have the public participation portion of the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to the motions portion. First up, we have a motion by Mr. Conway and Mr. Gignak, to ask the superintendent to identify an individual or individuals to complete a comprehensive audit within the Lowell High School regarding the status and condition of all repairs and replacement of facility and systems that are currently needed. Upon completion of this audit, the superintendent will set up a joint meeting with members of the school committee and the city manager to develop and implement a plan that will address the need of repairs and updates. This doesn't require seconding. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that this kinda goes hand in hand with a motion that Mr. Leary put on at the last school committee meeting, and I think, again, with the accreditation that the high school was facing, in the next couple of years, I think we need to take a look at facilities and and find out what's going on with them and what's going right with them. I think what's important to take a look at is the report that took place back ten years ago, and the recommendations of the facilities at the high school. There was one thing that that stood out, and I can remember the the staff being rather upset with the fact that things took so long to get fixed, and there was a tremendous frustration there. And listening to staff today, that frustration, I don't think, really has gone away, and I think that's something that, you know, we need to, obviously, we need to take a look at and to address. You know, one, just a, just a couple of quick examples, the heating system, and I've talked about this on the floor a number of times at the high school, there seems to be always a problem with that heating system, and I think that we need to take a look at it and figure out, once and for all, what are the steps that are needed to go forward, and not just for that, but I think that for any of the the problems that we have, so that we can sit down with the city side and and come up with a, I think, a logical plan. My colleague, Mr. Gignak, and myself went for a visit the other day, and just to give one other quick example, there's no hot water in the in the boys' varsity showers, and I asked about, well, when could that be taken care of? And they said, well, we'll put in a, an order to have that fixed. And I said, do you have any idea when it might be fixed? And the answer was, it could be months or perhaps even years before it's fixed. And and that's really not, you know, I think, again, it's the frustration, I don't think the individual is trying to be sarcastic by no means, but I think it's it's something that we have to take a good look at, and that's why, that's why I think we put this motion on, and I'm sure Mr. Gignak would like to address the situation also. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gignak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it brief. As Mr. Conway said, we did take a tour, and there were a number of things that really stood out to us. One was the the lack of hot water in the boys' varsity locker room, but also basic things such as leaks that that faculty members were having to move their desks to avoid getting dripped on. There was leaks in the hallways that were going untouched, and you can, just walking down the halls, you can see that leaks has been an issue for a long time, and it, this is a good first step to to really look at what needs to be done in a good timeline to to address those issues. I believe Lowell High School is a world-class institution, and the students and staff at that building deserve a facility to that, to that degree. Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
Just quickly, it's also reminds me of a motion that Mr. Leahy put on regarding having the joint facilities subcommittee between the high school and the school committee. I know we ran into, you know, November and December, but it's something that we definitely will will be doing in the first quarter of this coming year, not only the high school, but also K through eight. I mean, we have a lot of buildings that that definitely need attention. I know we've touched base with the mayor on it offline and and with other folks as well, so we're looking forward to utilizing this motion and the many motions that we've had for the last part of last year from Mr. Leahy, to address these concerns and find a way that not only addresses them and gets them done, so people can have a comfort level where you're not moving your desks to to stay dry. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I, just by way of information, we do have, on the city side, a municipal facilities subcommittee, and so I'll work with them to set something up between the two. Thank you. All those in favor, signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have a motion by Ms. Scott, for the superintendent to provide a timeline for the implementation of an online packet, and also to provide the date we can expect to begin providing the paperless format. Seconded by Mr. Gignak. Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I began looking for an online packet approximately a year and a half ago, as a PTO member in the city, to bring back information to our PTO, and I'm happy to be making this motion right now at this time. Our current system, actually, this ties in really well to the CELP recommendations that were just given about the manual processes that we perform. We start our documents off in an electronic format, and then we kind of back up from that, and we, you know, photocopy twenty copies, file folders, labels, emails, even courier, you know, the the files to our homes. I think creating a paperless agenda would save time, money, labor, and also, above all else, I think we need a centralized location for the files to be housed that's searchable. So, I was just looking for, after the year and a half, I was looking for a timeline on when that was going to happen. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have a motion by Ms. Martin, requesting that the committee vote to establish a regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the curriculum and instruction subcommittee on the second Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM at the Rogers School Administrative Building. Seconded by Mr. Leary, enthusiastically.
That's just how we like it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is actually a motion that we had discussed prior to the end of last session, that there were certain subcommittees that really kind of warrant a more regular schedule, just to ensure that we don't, you know, as many times has happened, gotten into these subcommittee meetings and had them back up a bit so that they could be three, four hours long. So, this was a, an idea that we had discussed, again, before the end of the year, to implement, at least for the curriculum and instruction subcommittee, a monthly schedule, so that the committee is aware of it, staff is aware of it, parents who may be interested in topics being discussed can be aware of it, and that, you know, moving forward, it's something that will just be on the calendar and allow us a chance to kind of meet more regularly without having to, you know, kind of back things into a inordinately long meeting. I would appreciate my colleagues' support on it, but would welcome if anyone has any concerns.
Any concerns, questions? All those in favor, signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Having no, no business in the subcommittees, we'll move on to the reports of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first report that I have submitted this evening is an update on the educator evaluation tool, and this educator evaluation tool change is a major change that has happened through regulation on June 28th of 2011. It is the primary project in the Race to the Top Initiative, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has done substantial amount of work on providing the process that meets the regulations and tools and templates that go along with it. The overarching goal of the evaluation process is to make supervision evaluation a learning experience, and and it is very complicated. We've been working collaboratively with the official, official members of the union, central office staff, to get recommendations and next steps, especially for the Merklin School, because the evaluation pieces are happening at this point, but we also are looking at negotiations and language and templates that will be used for the entire district. The reason why I bring this to your attention is because I'm an honest practitioner, and the evaluation process for superintendents has been released. If you look at the second page, there were eight different documents, all of which are of extremely lengthy, à la Department of Education, and so, there is implementation guides for the district, there's school-level planning and implementation guides, there's the rubrics for superintendents, administrators and teachers, there's bargaining language contract, there's some some model language, although in the webinar, there was a large webinar that was done across the state on the 10th of January, they said that bargain language is still ongoing and being developed across the state, and they were gonna help more with that. There's an implementation guide for principal evaluations, which I am using that guide with principals. It is my expectation to help the principals through them experiencing the evaluation process with my, with my lead, that they'll know the components, the core components, self-evaluation, reflection, goal-setting, looking at formative assessment, summative assessment, all the legal pieces of this particular piece. And then, there's all kinds of other rubrics that have to be developed. As you know, in public education, there are several different jobs that they do not have standing rubrics. All of these have to be negotiated, we have to agree with, and it's very important that our staff realize that the intention of supervision evaluation is for us to learn together, to develop, to deliver the best services to our young people, and the professional development that is needed for that to happen. If you continue to look, I have put the cycles of the evaluation for superintendent, which go right in hand with the law, so there will be a self-assessment, analysis and goal-setting, and so that will be developed to be submitted to you all in February meetings, and the plan, collecting evidence, and so, it is really very complicated. So, what I'm thinking is, as a team, there are several meetings that are being offered through the Department of Education, secondary and elementary education, but I think it's important for the personnel subcommittee, at a minimum, and as well as the entire committee, to look at the documentation, to see what we need to do. It's very interesting. We can do some goal-setting together, which I consider to be exciting, because the goals of the district is the work of everybody here in our leaders, and I've been working quite diligently since the beginning of my superintendency at talking to a lot of people in an entry plan, and I've gone through interviewing people, what are thoughts, what are parents I'm saying, what are teachers saying, what principals' goals are, and so, when it comes together, it's not one person's plan, it's a plan for the city to improve the educational outcomes for every single little child, a big child, whoever we service. So, my recommendation, next, you see this circle? That's the signature of the cycle. This is the legal cycle, the regulations on the last page of the processes that you would need to supervise and evaluate. As we go through this process, we will learn together, there are consultants that can help us, there are webinars, there are people who will be willing to help us go through this, but a lot of it's common sense in sitting down and looking at these documents and figuring out, what's the work, what are the rubrics, how do I assess myself? I believe that feedback from the public is how public education grows. We are, we are adults doing the best we can for young people, so I wanted to bring this important legislation, it's very complicated, to your attention, so that we can, in fact, schedule a personnel subcommittee meeting for supervision evaluation, which I believe that includes the entire committee, and just for your review. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion to accept as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted.
Would you prefer that we make a motion at the conclusion of this to then schedule the personnel subcommittee?
Sure. Yeah, we can...
Just at her, at the superintendent's suggestion, as part of her report, I'd make a motion then that we ask the superintendent to poll committee members to schedule a personnel subcommittee in the next couple of weeks.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikwich, to set up a subcommittee for the personnel and the evaluation. All those in favor, signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Moving on to number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next report is the Unified and School Improvement Template in Progress. As a district, we, we plan in every school building, plans are made by principals and teams of what, in fact, the data says and where we need to do our work in in schools, and so, there was a new template that was created this year, so we could simplify the process. Historically, unified school improvement plans are eighty pages, and they're not the most useful documents. They're supposed to be living, breathing documents, where people can say, here's what we're working on. A year goes quickly, as you know, in this field. These goals for every child to become an avid reader and an avid writer take more than years, but we need to look at the data. So, this particular year, we started off with developing a new template. We also have presented them as principals and assistant principals at leadership, and we gave technical assistants, key members of our team, Title I Director Patricia Kuzieka and Paul Schlickman, the head of the coordinator, research, testing, and assessment, were key people who helped out. We gave leaders time to go back to their buildings, look at their data, unpack the data, which they're pretty very well, they're avid at looking at data. They have had two data summits in buildings this year with staff to look at data and to understand kids' progress. And so, that's how we started. Those were submitted right before the Christmas break, and we are looking at the data and making sure that the goals and objectives are tied to the right outcomes. As I went to four or five buildings this week, looking at supervision evaluation, the principals, I'm looking at personal goals and how they're building teams in their buildings, and how they're gonna meet those goals. So, we will always look at how the data is, we'll, we'll look at formative assessment data, which means making sure kids are learning as we go, and the principals know where the strengths and the needs of every building is, and then, of course, when the new MCAS data comes in, we reassess, see how we're doing and what growth, we've made in growth data and in CPI. So, this is the sample of what, in fact, is in the district, the template, and so, the core, the district vision statement, core values of the district, and then our demographics, schools demographics went in there, their status for accountability, where they stand, and what they need to work on. This is the district on the next page, adequate yearly progress history that we've had, and so, what are the needs assessment? What have they done with data? What professional development needs to occur to meet the needs? This was done in teams in buildings, and it comes back to, to the central office after going through, in fact, the process. So, at this stage, it is our goal to have less than a ten-page Unified School Improvement Plan, so everybody knows what the goals of the school are and what everybody's role is in meeting those goals. So, it's for your review, so if you have comments or questions, please.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Motion to accept as a report of progress by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikwich. All those in favor, signified by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next report is from Assistant Superintendent Student Support Services, Ann Murphy, asking for permission to contract services. During the school year, we have many hard-to-fill positions that, in fact, can stop or, or really short, I'm having a word problem, sorry, everybody, can get in the way of the educational planning, so the IEP planning. And so, we have some unfilled psychologist positions for leave of absence, we had, which really, really puts a damper on the process of ma- meeting the IEP compliance pieces, and so, in this particular memo, Assistant Superintendent Murphy is asking that three additional psychologists or a medical leave, that we look to hire people, and also, there's a vacancy for a speech therapist at the Riley School, and she's looking to go towards private staffing agencies, because although we have looked at retirees, people have worked with us, who do oftentimes come back to fill in when we have people out sick, at this particular time, the Special Education Department, the direction of Mrs. Murphy, has not been able to find those people, so she's looking to go... So she's looking to go to an agency that, in fact, has highly qualified people who can do that work. So that's what this request is. And Mrs. Murphy is telling us that the hourly rate is $50 to $80 an hour, and the funding would be provided by the Special Education 240 grant. And if you have any detail, question, Ms. Murphy will be free to answer questions.
Mr. Conway.
Just a quick comment. I'm actually kind of surprised that we haven't had to go in this direction before, because obviously, when we're dealing with speech therapists, PTs and OTs are extremely difficult to find. And this is a very common thing to do, is to contract the services. And I think that it's probably a wise move, because I think that you can tend to get a little bit more consistency with the services. So I certainly would be supporting that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to, motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next report serves as a report of progress regarding the dual enrollment program at Lowell High School and also an invitation to the school committee. On Tuesday, February 7th, Middlesex Community College and Lowell High School will congratulate 96 students who have completed college-level courses through the dual enrollment program. Each of these children have participated in at least one course, seven children, it says, have two courses. And so it is the largest participation we've had in our history, I believe. And so I wanted to give you plenty of notice to join the celebration at 1:30 on Tuesday, February 7th, in the auditorium of Lowell High School. So it's a celebratory activity. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway.
Just very quickly, I want to say that we're extremely fortunate to have a partner in Middlesex Community College, and they're always there for us. And I think that it works, it's a two-way street. It works very well for us, and it works well for them, too. And the teachers that I've talked with that are in that program, they're very excited about it. And again, they have seen it blossom in the past few years, and they're extremely, extremely pleased with it. So I think it's something that certainly is extremely advantageous to our students, and it certainly does help Middlesex, too, as a feeder system. So this, this is a, this is a great thing that, that's happening with the partnership between the Lowell School System and Middlesex. Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
Just echo what Mr. Conway just said, but also want to thank Dr. Jack for the invitation and for her efforts in putting this together as one leading it and the staff. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Having no, no business, we'll move on to convention and conference requests. We have an overnight student athletic request. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, it's a request from the cheerleader team to attend a field trip, and it would be paid by the Friends of Lowell High. Just want to make sure. So the cheerleader team will be attending a competition. Yes, a cheerleading tournament, and it will be two overnight stays, and there will be no time left from school.
Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Finally, we have communications, informational, the Lowell Telecommunication, Channel 10, broadcast of the school committee meetings live on the first and third Wednesday of each month, Thursday at 9:00 PM, Sundays at 2:00 PM, and Tuesdays at 10:00 AM. Moving on to the adjournment portion of the agenda. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. We stand adjourned.